Well, you're gonna want to mute.
Good evening, everyone. Seven o'clock, time to commence this hearing of the inland wetlands and water courses commission. The objective of the hearing is to obtain information and hear public comments regarding I W W C twenty thirty six applications to construct a wetland crossing for proposed driveway in new construction. In keeping with the usual procedures of the commission in the hearing, I will ask in order first for the applicants or their agent to comment on the proposal with special reference to how the plans have been modified or evolved, response to comments at previous meetings, afford an opportunity for commissioners to inquire, ask questions about the proposed permit, and finally, open the hearing to public comment from interested parties. I see on screen that we have Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Halcy, alternate Monroe, of course, myself, acting chairman, George Elliott, present for the meeting. We will seat Mr. Monroe for the hearing and for the subsequent meeting that will follow. I was informed that Commissioner Lally would not be able to attend, and evidently Commissioner Smith also. Okay. So proceeding then to item three of the hearing agenda, I will ask the applicants again, or their agent as preferred, to again briefly outline the proposal and especially focus on the modifications, recent modifications. I note that we have in our record online, a new crossing plan dated three one twenty one, and a construction sequence final draft to reference for the application. So I'll turn it over to the applicants, who wants to speak?
So, thank you Chairman Elliott, this is Eric Letesca, one of the two applicants. George Correa is the other person also on the call, and then I'll ask George Logan, who is also on the call, to please feel free to follow up here as, after I do my best here to describe the the application. So what's being proposed is a crossing of a wetlands of two wetlands areas, they actually, we believe they're intermittent streams during the wet season, they there can be some, you know, a few inches of water that'll collect, especially after a good rain event happens. The the crossing goes over, you know, what is what's kind of a corridor behind the cul-de-sac and actually all the way behind Pine Ridge Drive. The access to rear lots behind the the frontage on Pine Ridge would go through a narrow area approximately about forty five feet. It's right on the left side of the end of the street on the cul-de-sac, right, right where the cul-de-sac kind of starts, the round area of the cul-de-sac. The the proposal involves us sort of following the grade of the the area right off of Pine Ridge Road, and then, as you know, if you if you live in the area, particularly on that side of Pine Ridge, it dips down, there's a corridor where these wetlands areas go through, one branch comes in behind all of the, the watershed is behind a lot of the houses on Pine Ridge, the other actually comes down, it's where the the water course coming down from Old Farms Road flows through. Once we get down, once you get down into the low, low lying area, the plan involves raising the the crossing up approximately five or six feet. And we would have interlocking concrete blocks to kind of create the the outer walls and then fill the interior portion of it. And and put a gravel gravel driveway on top of it. The two streams that go underneath this crossing would flow through on the western side, eastern side, forgive me, a three foot culvert culvert pipe would be embedded twenty five percent of the of the area of a cross section embedded into the into the ground. And the eastern stream would flow through a larger eight foot wide by four foot tall concrete box culvert. That too would be embedded with about twenty five percent of its area would be embedded under under the ground. Those that last part there, the the box culvert is one of the more recent changes to the plan. We originally were going to have diameter to comply with potentially another jurisdiction from the Army Corps of Engineers, which were in the process, still in the process of working with a bigger a bigger opening was required to comply with one of their, one of their standards. I I think that kind of generally describes what's happening, I think, so you know, the driveway would go down, hit to that bottom area and then kind of go back up, and it would go and allow access to one of the one of two homes that will be built on the rear lot, that's that's that this that this driveway kind of that this opening in from Pine Ridge gives access to that property. I think, you know, I don't know that I have anything else, at least in my head to add to this, so maybe I can ask either George Correa or George Logan, if you guys have anything else to add. George Logan, the quick introduction, George has represented us in a couple of ways, he's he's evaluated the ecological impact, he's also a wetlands and a wetland scientist, he could probably speak to a range of factors here about the impact of the project, and George Correa certainly knows the the details, the specific details of dimensions and in the crossing and volumes and stuff like that better than I do. So I'll turn it over if you guys have anything else to add. Thank you for the time.
Yeah.
Sure, this is George Logan, Remont Ecological Services, soil scientist, wetland scientist, ecologist. There's been a couple of pro, a couple of reports that I've submitted into the record. I think the last one was about a month ago or so, I believe. Trying to find a date here, yes, actually, February twenty second. It's been a while. So at that time, one of the things we had been discussing prior to that was whether we would have stayed with the thirty six inch pipe for both streams. And as you might recall, I'd gone out and evaluated these streams, yes, it was winter, yes, there was snow in the ground, but you always can see with the aquatic organisms that are utilizing the stream. I was most more interested in the eastern stream because our hydraulic engineer had told us that the western watershed, which is a larger one, has about forty acres, and it has wetlands also associated, it's behind all those houses that are Pine Ridge. And the eastern watershed was only twenty three acres, and as you will recall, whereas the western stream is almost I wouldn't say it's level, it's it come, it comes up, but not in a high grade past the the area of the crossing, and there are wetlands behind that to the north. The eastern stream or the twenty three acres is, has a pretty steep section for about four hundred or so feet before it flattens out at the top, and there's that's associated with the red maple swamp at that point. So based on my evaluation of the of the aquatic life that could use that, I'll also, you know, have, you remember, we had discussions with with Hank Gruner and the sensitivity of the general area because of the Hop River nearby, and the potential that wood turtles could come up to this area for foraging, following the stream courses. And as you recall, just below this crossing, the wetland is pretty flat and it's somewhat open. So during, well, from now on, and during the growing season, it will be replete with all kinds of herbaceous species that could potentially have provide for cover for for the turtles as they come up the corridor, if they would, even though to the actual river itself, there's a section of about maybe hundred, hundred fifty feet, which is also pretty steep gradient and sort of rocky. And probably not the best place for turtles to pass, but it is possible to pass. So based on all our discussions that we had, and the fact that we have to comply with certain things that the Army Corps of Engineers voice on us, even though typically they do it only for, you know, higher order streams, higher order intermittent streams and also perennial streams, we decided that we we better go with the box culvert to comply with the openness ratio. Even though we don't have to comply with part of it because it is an intermittent stream such as being one point two times the the flow path of a stream, that's usually for perennial stream. So we decided to put it on the western and maintain the thirty six inch culvert somewhat buried for the eastern stream, not the west, the western has the box culvert. Another thing that we we kind of threw in the mix, one of the questions that was asked of us was how about mitigation? We explained that typically, in kind mitigation is not a good idea when the site is relatively undisturbed unless there was a an area that we could restore, enhance. So we decided that as far as mitigation is concerned, that we would do one thing up, as as recall, the twenty three acre or so eastern intermittent stream goes up the hill where it flattens about four hundred feet from from the crossing. It's unfortunately replete with Japanese barberry, which is an invasive species, an invasive shrub. So what we proposed was for where the stream comes up and the the wetland corridor starts widening out and flattens, is to remove Japanese barberry within fifteen feet of the intermittent stream and for a length of at least a hundred and fifty feet from where it crests up the hill and then follows up. I think by by the time we get to a hundred and fifty feet or so, it starts veering off, off off site. And the the proposal will be simple and and thankfully, Japanese barberry is one of the easiest species to get rid of. You can basically yank them, you don't have to use any refractory organics, any herbicides no, to to remove them. I've done it in my backyard out here, and it took me really one season to get rid of. But we're probably saying that probably is going to be a first season where the bulk of it is taken out mechanically, and usually the procedure for that is to wait for the soil to be moist after rainstorm, and then you could use a weed wench to basically take the whole thing out, if possible, if it's too big, you cut it at the base, remove all that material properly. Then the second year, you just remove seedlings, that's the only thing that probably will remain that will come up again. And after that time, we recommended that we could interplant in appropriate spaces to diversify the understory particular by by minimum of fifty shrubs that could be planted, and I think the species that we selected are some ones that are out there already. For instance, spice bush, common winter berry, nanny berry, I think we had gray dogwood in there too, and a minimum of fifty species to be planted. So I think what we've done in the past few months here, after all the discussions that we had, where it was a significant improvement, especially with the box culvert at the western stream with the with the bigger watershed. I know that at the last time, my my colleague Hank Gruner had question as to whether there will be a hydraulic issue, meaning that we were, the box cover would potentially concentrate and erode the stream. Again, I mentioned at that time that I didn't feel qualified specifically, so the project engineer, I think, was the one that commented on that. I don't think he's with us tonight, probably has another commitment, but my understanding is that the improvement that is done and associated with the box cover, you just don't plop a box cover down, you you obviously make sure that you you guide the, you guide the water through the channel, that he thought, from talking to him, that this would not create an erosional problem, that the the two year storm, which is the primary storm that we are concerned with, that happens frequently enough and it has a large volume, would pass through here. As a matter of fact, if you recall, the fifty year storm will pass through the box culvert without a without a tailwater, so that's that's good. So again, based on our review of the plans, my observations during the two site visits that I had out there, and again consultations with our consulting engineer and our project engineer member, this hydraulic engineer and a civil engineer, and also discussions with the US Army Corps, I actually talked with Corey Rose from the US Army Corps of Engineers, we came to the conclusion that this this plan, as it has now been revised with the proposed mitigation, will not only protect and maintain the Brooklyn functions and values that have been provided by by these regulated resources, but also will maintain the ecological integrity of the string corridor. Now, one thing that we didn't mention that probably should be as part of the record is that at this point, our total in disturbance in the wetlands is two thousand nine hundred, two thousand two hundred and ninety five square feet, one point oh five acres, and the area of disturbance within the upland review area, which I believe is a hundred feet, is eight thousand four hundred and fifty seven square feet, oh point one nine acres. Erosion segmentation controls have been been in the plans all this time for the construction, for the construction time. The plans, as you recall, have been revised, I believe, some additional things were put in there, including some erosion blankets for some of the steeper slopes, and I think there's a something in the plans for that. So again, I I could share the, I have the ability to share my report and also share the the plans, which could have done, I guess, for everyone. And I'd be open to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
George, we do have Andrew on, I don't know if Andrew wants to.
Well, I didn't see him, sorry, Andrew.
No problem.
Oh, there you are. No picture, huh?
No picture, video's gone on my camera, I don't know.
Okay, you're on, Andrew, thanks.
No, I really don't have anything to add, I think you pretty much covered everything, you know?
I'll interject then to see if the any commissioners have questions for the applicants or their agents. I'll begin with one question for George Logan, to the effect, when would, of course, as we know, barberry is most readily removed when the soil is slightly moist, it seems to me that in terms of the construction sequence, would it be appropriate to address that removal early on during, for example, the construction section? I believe number three is to start removing vegetation in the direct path of the proposed crossing. Would it be appropriate to address the invasive removal at that time during the construction sequence?
It could be done at any time, obviously, the sooner the better, so that, you know, you have, because my thought is you're going to have to look at the barberry removal for two seasons and be dealing with resprouting that will happen from the root masses that are still in, although it doesn't happen there very much based on my experience, but it does happen. So it could be done at any time, obviously, the earlier it's done, the better in the season for removal purposes, so you're not dealing with a with a big mass. And, you know, new growth and that will will happen pretty quickly in the in the spring season, as you know, the shrub will continue growing.
It's already leafing out.
It's already leafing, it's one of the first ones that leaf out. The invasive seem to do that all the time for some reason.
Another question, did you notice any bittersweet on the side? I know when we did our sidewalk, the barberry was quite evident, I wondered if
Obviously, I did not focus on barberry because I was looking more for mitigation within the wetlands. I didn't notice any specifically, but as you know, it's there, I mean, I don't have to to guess too long, and it would not be necessarily in the wetlands, it would be at the edges of the wetlands and in the upland areas. But if there was a big infestation, I would have, I would have tagged it, but I did not see big infestation, but it's it's likely there.
Okay.
And that you cannot yank, unfortunately, that you have to
Lord knows.
The cut, the cut and paint.
Lord knows.
Yeah, I'm looking at it in my backyard, I've been struggling with it for about ten years.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
Chairman Elliott, I I know, as we reviewed the plan, you know, one of the recommendations was to build a bridge, and we ruled that out because it was cost prohibitive. And I just was looking to get an understanding for what the the cost magnitude would be to put a bridge in versus the other stuff we were doing, because it seems to me that a bridge would be a better mechanism, might not be most feasible, but to just rule it out and say cost prohibitive, I don't think allows us on the commission to do the due diligence to make sure that we are making the right decision. So I was trying to get a feel for, you know, what was the increase in cost if we were to put a bridge in there as opposed to the the box culvert and in the other, you know, pipe, if you will.
I I don't know for sure what the bridge would be, I'm sure it will be an order of magnitudes more than what we're proposing here, but I I would also mention that, you know, if you, the Army Corps of Engineers would not recommend a bridge here, they would be fine with with the box covers, which is actually what what we're doing for the for the larger watershed and the larger brook. So when you look at feasible improvement alternatives, actually, where economics come in, it's not the only thing, obviously, it's you can, you cannot just base it on economics, you know that very well, but it's sort of a, it's a balancing act. And the other thing you want to do is to say, okay, what function am I going to increase or by do using a different best management practice via a bridge? Is it going to allow for more, say, wildlife movement through? Well, not really, not based on the resources that is here, wildlife will either pass through the box culvert or pass over the, so are we, what are we, what are we gaining with a bridge? The only thing that we're gaining, obviously, is a little less direct impact within the wetland, but again, you've seen the wetland down there, and you've seen it in context of the overall wetland, so there's a very large wetland, even though it's been used in the past as pasture to the down gradient, and of course, you have a larger wetland up gradient which flares out. Once you get past, just further north, a little bit, the the wetland flares out and goes behind all those houses, and it's shaded by the hill on the on the other side. So again, I I have to look at it from a perspective, what are you gaining, what are you losing? And if you're, if what you're gaining is minimal, I wouldn't say it's nothing, if it's minimal, but the the price tag goes up to the point where you're now you know, you 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 will eliminate the project purpose, you, this will be economically unfeasible at that point, in in my view. We did a bridge in for a much more high, unique and functional resource in Manchester years ago, and and that baby was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it was about sixty five to seventy foot span, wooden, it was prohibitive. So I don't know, maybe that the prices are better now, but I would think it's an order of magnitude more than what is being proposed here. So let me put it this way, if this was a a roadway, I did some work in in Litchfield County, and there was a roadway that went over a corridor, which was much, much more significant than this, but there was twenty five lots up the hill. So it it made economic sense, and so they they kind of committed a compromise and they had a span, it didn't span the entire wetland, but it spanned a significant proportion of it and the stream. So there's a lot of things that come into play here, my my personal professional view is that a a bridge, it would be prohibitive here, and we're not getting much.
Wouldn't that, I guess my concern is, this is the most significant filling of a wetland that that we've had come before the commission since I've been here anyhow, and and so I wouldn't want to just dismiss out of hand the the improvement that you could get by not putting all that fill into the ditch. And maybe, maybe the applicant or the engineer has, you know, a feel for the the price increase, yeah, I have seen houses that have had a small wooden bridge go across the a wetland to get into it, and and so I know it can be done, I don't know what the cost is, and that's what I was trying to to get the feel for.
I don't know if Andrew can answer that.
Yes, Andrew Bush, no, so a couple, couple things to interject here with, you know, you're looking at a pretty long span here, which is obviously going to drive the cost of the bridge up, you know, you're going to need bigger, bigger support beams, abutments. One, one feedback I've gotten on those wooden bridges through the years has been the lumber's pressure treated and treated not to rot too, and you've got that potentially leaching into the wetland area too, you got it, you've got to consider, you know, a lot of people don't like those just for that, just for that fact. The bridges. But, you know, I I know the bridge George is talking about Manchester, and that was an expensive bridge, and I'm sure the cost has gone way up since then, since that bridge was done. You know, so, I mean, the order of magnitude here would be huge as far as an increase. So, I mean, the order of magnitude here would be huge as far as an increase compared to what we've proposed. You know, and then you have to consider, too, the the pressure treated wood, the potential leach and other chemicals from that into the, you know, into the into the ecosystem around here.
Okay, and and I guess, so Chairman Elliott, I do have another question. And I remember from our last meeting, this would be a question for Mr. Gruner. In in Mr. Gruner's letter, he did talk about both the bridge and the the box culvert. And I recall at the last meeting, Mr. Gruner was still expressing some concerns about the plan that it was presented. And I I didn't follow all the detail there. I had to go do some research on what riparian, you know, waterways were and all that kind of stuff. And so I tried to do a little bit of homework, but I'm still not sure I understood what Mr. Gruner was trying to bring across to us so that we could make the right decision. And and I would be interested in hearing from him.
Thank you. I I believe the box culvert is an improvement. There's there, you know, and I discussed that in in, you know, the the letter that I submitted in January. My concerns are more that you're still, I mean, ideally, when you're faced with a situation like this, you're, you know, the first goal is avoiding a crossing. And we talked about the possibility of that coming in off of the other road, which was ruled out as a possibility because there wasn't permissions to be able to come in from the backside. So then the second goal is to try to really minimize the impacts, and especially physical impacts, fills and changes to the natural hydrological dynamics of that system that feeds the Hop River, to try to minimize that as much as possible. If you do, and George had mentioned, Mr. Logan had mentioned that, you know, the the Army Corps is okay with the box culvert approach and culverts. But if you read the best management practices document put out by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, quote from it, for permanent crossings and non-tidal streams, spans are strongly preferred as they avoid or minimize disruption to the stream bed and avoid entire stream bed reconstruction and maintenance inside the culvert or pipe arch. It, there's no doubt that culverts and box, you know, pipe culverts and culverts can handle the flow if designed correctly of of water that's coming through there. But the question isn't, will they allow the water to pass? It's how they allow the water to pass. You have a natural system there, and this isn't as easy as two separate intermittent streams. If you look at the 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 dynamics of the system there, it widens out fairly quickly and right at the point of where the crossing is. And you you're really becoming a wetland at that point. It's a much wider span. And you mentioned it would require a wide span. That's because you're basically spanning, you know, a system that's that's at that point, in all intents and purposes, a wide wetland that as it normally, when it normally floods, that spills out across that span. And it becomes more of a sheet flow that's going down through there and and more of a a controlled flow. When you block that, fill that and add culverts to pinch points for it, yes, they will handle that flow, even the high levels of water flow that might come in under extreme storm events. But they're not going to flow in the natural way that they normally would through that system. And the concern that I would have, it would be that there would be physical alterations that would occur to the both upstream, but more importantly downstream, as that affected that system, which is within close proximity to the Hop River and therefore to the Hop River. There's been several statements about the the significance of the system. Well, once again, you can't look at that, those two intermittent streams in that wetland, separate from its connectivity to the Hop River system, which is one of the primary natural resources in the town. And, you know, is fed by a series of tributaries. And as those tributaries are impacted, or their high, you know, their dynamics are impacted. That has an impact on that larger Hop River system. There's been mention of references to wood turtle and to the ecology of the organisms. But I would say that's not really the issue. It's not so much the habitat that it provides as a tributary to wood turtles or benthic macroinvertebrates or fish. That's really not the primary function that that we're really talking about here is the hydrology of that that Hop River system and the natural flow versus an altered flow system. And my concern is one, and I'm not an engineer, so I can't tell you how how that would erode out. But I do know from experience of systems that when you, when you channel out, when you create culverts, you change those dynamics. And it it's one thing if it was a very defined stream channel that had a discrete upland right next to it that didn't have the flooding characteristics that this that this appears to have. You know, that my concerns are that it affects that natural flow and that potentially has ramifications for the physical characteristics and the, you know, the the inputs into the potential inputs into the the Hop River system. So those are the concerns that I have. I, you know, the box culverts are certainly an improvement because a box culvert is, you know, allows for a better flow than than typically than pipes. But I want to emphasize that it's not will it. I don't think anybody would question the fact that it's easy to design an engineer or system that will handle these flows. The question is how they handle those flows. And that's, I think, the challenge that that's there. If you can't avoid and you can't span it, I mean, that's that's the that's the dilemma.
Okay, Commissioner Larson, did that satisfy your inquiry?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Chair Elliott, I had a a thought while that conversation was going on, I'd like to add.
Go ahead.
Is there any chance you could put two culverts in and get rid of the two? There are.
Right, there's two culverts now. There's a box culvert to the west and the circular culvert to the east.
Well, I would think that the circular culvert, that would be something that would create more of a problem downstream, because it would funnel out whatever water is going through there into a small area, smaller area, and possibly create more erosion downstream. And I think, possibly, it would be more difficult for any amphibians or whatever that going upstream, especially on the east side there, where the swamp is. If there's any riparian corridor, that would be where it is, going up to that swamp. From my experiences in out in the forests and so forth, that's the place the the that the wildlife will go to. They'll go up to the to the swamp, and that's where they lay their eggs and so forth. And so that's that eastern side, I would think, would be, if you could put a culvert, even if you put maybe two four-foot culverts, one for each stream, I think possibly would be an improvement.
Chairman Elliott, could I?
Could we, hold on a minute, Mr. Gruner. I want to get a response from the applicant. Again, either Mr. Logan or Mr. Bushnell could respond to that question and explain what the, again, what the culvert, the present culvert design is intended to accomplish and the rationale for the placement of the culverts in the current plan. Again, we're referencing the plan that's dated 3-1, excuse me, yeah, to 2021, correct?
Three, three 10.
Three 10, okay.
Okay, so first off, so the the, the culverts were placed at the low point of the of the flow. You you know, the flow out there, what we've observed, and George can confirm it, you know, especially the easterly wetland is not very wide, is not a very wide channel. You know, the wetlands wide there, it's a pretty, pretty narrow, narrow channel of flow. You know, in, so we put the the culverts at the lowest point in the inside those wetlands to mimic the flow that's there now, keep it in the same spot, same direction. You know, and as far as, you know, the downstream effect, you can see particularly on the outlet, we put a wide, wide pad of riprap there to for velocity control, although it's pretty flat through there. But also to just spread the flow back out if it gets concentrated at all coming through, particularly the the easterly culvert there. You know, the box culvert will stay the same, pretty much the same width that it is flowing at now. You've seen that's a that's an eight-foot wide culvert. So, you know, as far as the downstream effect, we've looked at that. That's why we did what we did with the riprap and the wide riprap pad there. Making it as long as we could. You know, I don't know that adding, you know, right now we have two culverts there, so I'm not sure we're getting that adding more. I mean, both culverts can pass up to the 100-year storm and still leave freeboard on the driveway. And if it's a 50-year storm, they can pass without any any hit, headwater on the on the pipe they can walk or freely flow through.
Can I just emphasize that last point there is that standard, which comes from the Army Corps of Engineers, is that the systems, the culvert should be able to support the 50-year storm with continuous flow, no pressure. So with, you know, there is channelization and control of the flow, the direction of the flow of the water through the culvert. But up to the 50-year storm event, there is no increase to the velocity that the water will flow through the system. That's a design standard that it's meeting.
George Logan here, just in response to some of his comments. I did submit a report early on, and that was on January 22, at which point I I looked at the what was happening there. It was right after a storm, which was fortuitous, I suppose. I provided a couple of pictures that show something that I think very important to note, and that's photo two and photo three. All of the photos are important. But photos two and three in particular show that what happens just past where these two streams basically coalesce. There's a very wide, flat wetland corridor there. And it has been denuded of vegetation over the years since I believe in part it was used as a as the place for horses to run when it was dry. I don't think that's happening now. But what you will see from these photos is that the the channels just past where we're crossing. And if we could cross further down, it will be maybe different, but this is where we, the only place we are allowed to, based on the easement. It flattens out. So all these velocities that we're concerned about are just basically spread out, completely spread out over 100 feet. And then if you look at the the last photograph, photo four, which is a a true channel that's, you know, four, five feet wide and gushing with water at that time, that's water from our watersheds, but also from another watershed with a much larger stream that's coming off from the from the east and and coming in, and then that goes down to the to the Hop River. And so I was, I was at the perfect time to see what a storm would do during the non-growing season, obviously, when you don't have a lot of vegetative vapor transpiration and the like. So my view is that this is very typical for these kinds of streams to, as a matter of fact, very often, the the question that you ask is, okay, what storm do you want to put through? And usually, the DOT standard would be, depending what kind it is, up to a 25-year storm. Well, we're passing a 50 without a problem for for small intermittent streams with limited watersheds. I know it's all interconnected, and that's important. I just don't see it as a professional wetland scientist, as an ecologist, that this is really something that's going to detrimentally affect the the corridor and downstream, in particular, the habitat. You you got to make the decision based on what's there, not based on maybe, well, but this will be better if we did a bridge. You got to look at the conditions that are there. And again, my professional opinion is that even before, when we had just a 36-inch pipe, was sufficient because it it passes the the storm that's most likely to erode the stream, and that's the two-year storm. You you look anywhere, that's the that's the particular storm for intermittent streams that you're you're worried about because they had the the erosive, they can erode and increase the channel in larger, in larger channel. We're not increasing impervious surfaces here from the watershed, so that's not an issue. So it's just a matter of allowing the flow to get through. And with these oversized box culvert and box cover in the 36 one, that shouldn't be a problem at all. Again, I think you should look carefully at those pictures that I provided in my first report. I think they're very instructive. What you will see on photo one is the western intermittent stream at at full, full flow, full bank. And if you look at it, you'll see, yes, it does spread. But then, once it goes past that choke point, it spreads out and water goes all over the place, just left, right, center. And that's what it's been doing for many, many years. So I don't see an issue here. Honestly, I do not. I think this is, this is a normal situation that I've seen many, many times, where you cross an intermittent stream and you you put a culvert, you try to size it correctly. And in this particular case, it's it's oversized in order to comply with the U.S. Army Corps and DEP guidelines, which we were more than happy to do.
Hey, Mo. You're muted. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mr. Gruner to hold off on his comments until we've satisfied all the questions from the commissioners, and then we'll go back to basically public comment at that point, okay? Remember, we're not trying to get engage in a debate here, but rather to receive information. So once again, I'll ask, we've heard from Commissioners Larson and Monroe, are there any further questions for the applicants or their agents?
Commissioner Elliott.
Yes.
This is Jim Hallissey. I have a question through the chair to George. What I heard was that there was no increase in in pervious surfaces. Is that, did I hear that accurately?
I think what I said is there's no increase in pervious surfaces within the watershed. Meaning, you know, sometimes when you hear, when there's an increase in pervious surfaces in the watershed, often what happens is the volumes of water increase, even though you might be detaining them for there's an increase in runoff. That's what I meant. So there's no increase of impervious surfaces within the watershed.
Well, I mean, the development itself is creating impervious surfaces.
Not for the, not for the western stream. That that watershed is completely offsite.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. If there are no further questions or requests from the commission, I'd like to open it up now to members of the public who have comments on the proposed activity on the application. Be sure to identify yourself.
Be sure to identify yourself for the record. I guess everybody's uh got names now. Uh, and uh our recording secretary, uh, of course, has to be aware of who is addressing the commission. At any time. So again, please be sure to identify. If you, if you want to speak, first of all, you can either. Uh, as they say, raise your hand, uh, literally. Or figuratively with the appropriate control uh for the Zoom meeting. Uh, and I'll ask uh Board Clerk Mindy to also assist me in identifying who's, who wants to speak because I may not. Uh, catch that move. I'm looking at a grid here, and uh it's hard to know who wants to speak up. So again, any uh. Comments from the public. Regarding the application.
I, I'd like to speak.
Okay, I, I'll recognize Scott Persone first, and I believe that Joe Allard will be next in line, okay?
He can go first if he'd like, George, if he had his hand up first.
Uh, did he really? Okay. Um, okay, so Joe Allard.
My name is Joe Allard, um, at fifty-two Pine Ridge Street with uh Pine Ridge, which is just down the street from this proposed project. And um I do have that stream running through my backyard. And granted, it doesn't run all the time, but uh. I would like George Logan to come take a look and see how the photography on my land is and how my neighbors is. Because that stream can come up pretty doggone high. Now, I have a walkout basement, and there was a time when I thought that I wanted to. Put up sandbags because I was afraid that I was gonna have water come in my basement. My neighbor shares the same thing. He's got water that comes up high into his backyard, although it hasn't come into our, into our uh basements yet. But it does come up pretty high. Now, we talked about restriction with a box and all, and yes, it will restrict it. But we got free flow there right now, and in a good storm, the water comes up pretty high in my backyard and my neighbor's backyard. Now we're gonna put a culvert box in there, and okay, maybe it'll hold it for a little while, but what if someone forgets to clean it? Where, what is, where does that put me? It's a fine and dandy thing that you want to build a house there. I have no objection to building a house there. But what are the ramifications down the road when I have a problem or when my neighbor has a problem? Uh, I, I, I know that when they bought this property, they couldn't have gone into it blind. They knew that this was gonna be a wetland, that it was gonna be an expensive project. We're gonna just throw a culvert box in there and boy, it's cured. You don't see, we don't see the problems that are really gonna happen down the road until after they happen, and then we, how are we gonna deal with? That's all I got to say.
Okay, thanks for coming. Uh, okay, so Scott Persone.
Hey, thank you, George. Um, I just want to give you a little bit of history on this uh, this property. Uh, all that property, aside from Pine Ridge Drive subdivision, was owned by the Stanley family. Um, the, and Pine Ridge Drive subdivision was put in. In fifty-seven and access at the end of Pine Ridge was given to the Stanley so they could still access their property. Um, Stanley Drive and Old Farms was first put in, the subdivisions up there, there was remaining thirty acres, which was divided into three parcels. I'm just telling you this because there is, there's a, it's a little bit of history that uh. Goes along with this. Two houses came in from Hendy Road. Um, the other one had access from Pine Ridge. The Wetlands Commission wanted the one from Pine Ridge to alternatively have access from Old Farms. So the access was given up at Old Farms, and they got their building lot off of that fourteen acre parcel up there. Um, so. Landowner gave, gave the access to the fourteen acres, and the landowner didn't want access given to anyone else. Um, and, and I knew the landowner from the fourteen acres. So, you know, I, he's since passed. But he did have a, a hard time even getting um wetlands permission from the Wetlands Commission. Does a, the wetlands issue, there, there's a bruck that comes right past that driveway, but the other one coming off of Old. Okay, now um. But that's where we are today, and now the new landowner wants to cross seventy feet of wetlands, cross two intermittent streams. And disturb the associated upland, the, the wetlands. In the upland review area associated with a seventy feet of wetlands. Um, we, we've had expert testimony. From Hank Gruner, the herpetologist. Uh, that is a major riparian corridor. It's the intersection of two intermittent streams. It turns into wetlands. Um, a hundred feet away, there's another intermittent stream that I know has, has brook trout in it, and two hundred and twenty feet away is the Hop River. Um, if, I, I can't even imagine there could be a more critical. Uh, riparian habitat than what Hank has depicted in his lengthy depiction of, of this project area. Um, so. This is definitely regulated activity. Um, per Connecticut general statute, uh, forty-two and associated definitions, which I'm sure every wetlands commissioner knows by heart. And those are the things that. The Wetlands Commission is gonna be taking into account the uh look at this application. Um, so the wetlands, the wetlands definitions, the wetlands state definitions says you cannot divert flows. This is, and anybody can read it, read it that they want to. It's CGS forty-two, says in there. That you cannot defer flow, you can't erect permanent structures. And um. You, you can't fill wetlands. I mean, those are three of the, the major things that are happening with this crossing. You're gonna put twenty-three hundred, twenty-three hundred square feet of fill in a wetlands. Um, I, I just, I, I don't understand how any design features that anyone can, can dream up. Would ever. Would ever uh change the fact that we're gonna put in twenty-three hundred square feet of fill. This into two intermittent streams and the wetlands and the upland review. I don't understand how any design feature other than. Then uh, 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 bridge that goes completely across. Um, there, there's other things in that CGS forty-two, um, uh, like pollution, which could be erosion, want, want to channelize those. Those intermittent streams into wetlands, there, there's gonna be erosion, but you're converting the flows into separate channels. And um. That, um, that's not, that, that doesn't, that, none of that helps in the protection of our wetlands. The, the wetlands are the only wetlands that this, that the state of Connecticut has right now. Every time you fill a wetlands, you don't ever get those wetlands back. Those are filled wetlands, they're gone forever, and the riparian corridor. And, and you can say what you want about there's no turtles or there is turtles, but, you know, I live around the rivers and I know that there's a ton of turtles. Along that Hop River corridor, which is two hundred feet away. Okay. These, these regulations are for the protection of our wetlands. One thing that I would state, and this is, this is not a risk of harming the wetlands, this project. Will harm the wetlands, as I stated, and will be a permanent and irreversible and irretrievable loss of wetlands. Also, to consider the harmful effects of this regulated activity. To the associated wetlands outside of this area. Means, me, meaning in the Hop River. Um. But what I'm trying to say is that when you're, when you're checking, you're, you're checking on this regulated activity, you're not. Tasked with just this regulated activity, you're, you're tasked with the uh. The regulated, the regulated activity and the associated wetlands and upland review areas that's associated with this activity. Not just, not just this activity. Um. Lastly, I would like to say that there has been a feasible and prudent, prudent alternative by uh our, our herpetologist. He said span the whole area, and, and that would be your, your uh feasible and prudent alternative. Um, to me, filling twenty-three hundred acres forever. Of forever, you're gonna fill this twenty-three hundred acres of wetlands, and. The eighty-five hundred square feet of upland review you're gonna disturb. I, I think it's a major thing. The Wetlands Commission needs to look really closely at this. And, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Persone for those comments. Uh, and again, do we have further comments? From. Members of the public who are on the call. Okay, Mr. Gruner, I guess you're up again.
I guess I'm in the, the members of the public. Um, thank you, Mr. Elliott. Uh, may I pose a question to the, um, to the applicant?
Uh, sure.
Thank you. Um, did you, uh, I'm curious if you considered, uh, you made a revision to install. To remove one of the pipes and install a box culvert. Did you look at um the potential installation of two box culverts? Try to create larger span through, through, to uh, two separate box culverts of, of width?
At, at the one crossing?
No, well, there's two different, there's, there's two quarter, two stream corridors coming in. So you have two point, you had two points where you had, you had two separate pipes originally. Now you have a box culvert and a pipe, correct?
That's correct.
Did you look at two separate box culverts?
We did, I believe. I, Eric and George can answer that also.
We did. Um.
Not feasible from a installation standpoint or a cost standpoint or?
Cost is a factor. These are not inexpensive things. Um. And. You know, knowing that the western stream was the larger of the two watersheds. We decided to take the one that we knew was going to meet the uh design standard for the Army Corps and place it in the, the larger watershed.
Thank you for the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have further public comments? Do we have further questions from the commission?
Chairman Elliott, I, I do have uh one other comment that uh. Certainly, when we talk about alternatives. Considered and not chosen. One of the alternatives that we are not choosing, uh, and I understand very well why we're not, is. Right now, that is a single lot for one house to be built on, to have access not going through to Pine Ridge Drive. You know, the purpose of the project is uh, is to. Subdivide after we get clearance through here. But that. That is an alternative is to use it, is it's currently intended. To have one house on the site and have the access uh from Old Farms Road i- is, is it was originally intended. So I didn't see that written up in the application. I know that does not suit the applicant's desire at all. But that is the current approved. Lot function, if you will.
What I understand you to say then is that, simply put, um. Either denial of the permanent application or conditions that make it impractical. Uh, for the applicants would essentially preclude subdivision. And further that the approval of the application. Would not necessarily guarantee approval of subdivision. Is that a correct understanding of, of your comment?
Yes, right now we have one lot. And we have access that doesn't impact the wetlands at all. In uh. And that's the way the lot was. Planned out. Uh, you know, right now, we're, we're looking uh to build two houses in there, and I think that's a, a great idea, but uh, but it is uh. It does have significant wetlands implications with it that uh. That as the lot is right now, are, are not necessary to uh, to disturb the wetlands.
That's, that's correct.
So again, we want to build two houses in there that, that causes the, the need to go through the wetlands.
Right, then the, the application is essentially prospective, uh, just as for example, the um. The application for a permit on Lake Road that we recently considered. At that point, the uh, the applicants were. Speculatively interested in the property and required a, would, knew that would require a permit, so they applied for the permit. Knowing that if they didn't get it, they wouldn't be able to proceed. Uh, you know, there, there would be no point in acquiring the property. Uh, likewise, in this situation, the application for a wetland crossing is prospective in the sense that if the. Permanent application is denied, then it would be pointless to pursue the project any further. There's no way that they could uh acquire and subdivide the property. Without that, without that approval. So I think that they're really, although, although it's germane, I'm, I'm not sure that it's entirely relevant. To the fundamental question here is whether or not we can permit this activity.
Right, I agree.
Okay, uh, moving along then, um. If we, we, we will, of course, have, have an opportunity for further discussion of the proposal uh in the context of, of a regular meeting. Uh, for the hearing, however, again, our purpose is to uh obtain information and comment. And uh, we have, we've done that, and again, failing any further. Comments. Questions from the commissioners or response from the um. Applicant or the applicant's agents, uh, we can, we should be able to conclude the hearing. I see Mr. Logan with a hand raised, and so I'll recognize him for comment. Thank you. So, there's a few things that I, that have occurred to me as I've been listening to uh the public and to the commissioners and their concerns. Um, and that is, one thing that I noticed is that, you know, we were discussing this whole thing as to. Uh, the subdivision and where access can be gained, et cetera. And it, it is obvious to me that. Uh, whenever this. Property was, was cut out and, and made in its current configuration. If it was not anticipated that a access to the eastern portion of the side would, could not be gained. From Pine Ridge Road, then that access strip.
from Pine Ridge Road, then that access strip would not, would not be there, but it is. So that's, that's one thing kind of to consider. If, you know, if there was expected that, that strip would be used at some point. Now, I understand the whole issue with, with wetland impacts. So when I look at wetland impacts, obviously you look at direct impacts and you look at indirect impacts. And you have to look at physical impacts. And that's what the courts have, have told us. We can't even consider wildlife. You do not regulate wildlife. You know that, of course. You regulate the habitat that they use. So when it comes to the direct impact, the thing that we try to do is sort of a balancing act. And I think what has happened so far in these past few months is exactly an example of how the process works, where, you know, the pipes were increased in size. And then we have a box culvert to satisfy Connecticut Army Corps, Connecticut EP and Army Corps directives or guidelines. So that's, that's the issue. I think the crux of the matter is, is the direct impact. Because the indirect impacts, I think we've been discussing them here, but I, I think they, they kind of certainly fall into certain categories. So the indirect physical impacts fall into, you know, erosion during construction or after construction. For instance, if you had an undersized culvert, there would be concentrating the flow and increasing the velocity and all that, that obviously would, would be a concern. That's not the case here. We're passing the fifty-year storm without a tail, tailwater situation. So you look at the water quantity issue and the water quality issue. Obviously, we're not affecting the hydrology of the wetlands above or below, really. Because we're just letting the water go through. This is just a single driveway. It's not going to affect the water quality of the entire system. That's, especially in the post-construction, you know, just one car going back and forth. It's not an issue when you look at the entire system. And this is, this is a, a large wetland system and you have to consider what's there. So, and then it comes down to, I think, the physical, the, the feasible and prudent alternatives. And that's usually the sticky point. I agree. That's usually the sticky point. However, if you look at the definition of feasible and prudent alternatives, it really is a balancing act and it has to consider socioeconomic considerations, as long as it's not the only factor that it's considering. And as long as we can agree that the, the direct impacts are not that adverse and significant and egregious. And I don't think they are. I mean, we, we, we see these kinds of crossings fairly often. So I know that Scott talked about, you know, the, everyone's been talking about the bridge, but the bridge, again, it's, it's the socioeconomic issue. It's prohibitive. You know, by, by saying we'll do a bridge, we basically don't have a project. Everyone knows that. And unfortunately, you, you can't wield that unless you do it very carefully. And it has to be connected to, what are you really gaining? What are you really gaining? Are you gaining a, a better functionality of the water courses that are here in the, in the, in the wetlands? I would argue not, because with all the precautions have been taken. And so the physical impacts to the, to the wetlands, the indirect ones have been really truly minimized. I, I just want to point out that this is usually a balancing act. You have to look at the direct impact and ask the question, has it been minimized? Has it been avoided? Has it been minimized? And I believe it has been minimized. And if you go to the extra step and say, well, we want a bridge, you're basically pulling the rug under the applicant and saying, so sorry, you don't have a project. Because that's exactly what's going to happen. And when that happens, you have to start thinking of one little thing that is in the back of my head. Is that a taking? That's a legal term. I don't think that we want to enter into that category and be thinking of that. I think we just need to look at what's happening at this particular crossing. And, you know, maybe at the end of the day, if, of, if, if the commission started saying, based on Hank Gruner's obvious recommendation by just posing the question of, although I would say it's not necessary, but would a box culvert at the second crossing be a good thing? And would that help us to get over the hump, if you will, and pass, pass the, the litmus test, get to the threshold situation? And I, I don't know the answer to that because I'm not the applicant, but I would ask that question. And it's either a yes or a no. And if it's a yes, yes, we can consider it. And maybe that's something that helps us to get over the hump. And, and create a situation that's better than what is there now, even though I don't think the, it's significantly adverse to the resources. And I'll shut up here. I've said enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your informed comments. Once again, I'll ask if there are any further comments from the public.
It looks like Joe, Joe Allard's raising his hand.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allard, did you have further comment?
Yes, I made, I made a comment before. I believe I was the first one. But where does it end if we give permission to fill in the wetland or to put in a culvert? How many other applicants are going to come by and want to do the same thing to another piece of property? I understand there was one that was down a little further near the, near the soccer field over at the other end of the river, Hop River, behind the library. I understand it was a property over there and he had some wetland issues. Are, are we going to bend here now? And then again, for this man here? Or how about my son-in-law who's got fourteen acres by the Hop River? He wants to put up a, a barn down there. He wants to put up a garage, but it's wetlands. Are we going to make an allowance for that too? He can't get a permit and he knows he can't, so he doesn't even try. But should he try? How many people are we going to encourage? Now, this is, this, if, if you, if you walked this property, and I, I think everybody should, and see how that funnels, everything funnels in right at that point. There's a stream that was running down there Sunday when I was over by back of one of the neighbor's properties. And it's been dry for how long? And again, I'm saying that my property, Mr. Logan should take a look at my property because he's talking about arguists and he's talking about minimum and he's talking all these nice words to this little piece of property over there. But really, take a look downstream, upstream. Take a look upstream. If that is choked off, take a look upstream. Where's the impact? Sure, that, that's like a big sponge down there right now. And as dry as I've seen it, it was still like a big sponge down there. You're going to have an impact no matter what you do down there. And if you're going to allow it there, then you're going to have to allow it somewhere else down the line as well. Where do you stop? Where do you, where, where does the bending stop? Thank you.
Okay, and once again, I'm looking for hands raised and seeing none, I'm going to, oh, Mr. Larson.
I guess I will ask the question to Mr. Logan. Not sure if he's the right person to answer or not, but Mr. Allard, in his initial comment, was concerned about flooding up into his house because of the, the stream backing up. And I know we said we, we made allowances for the fifty-year storm. I've heard, you know, comments that, you know, the hundred-year storm happens every year now. And, and I'm just trying to get over the hump, if you will, on understanding how do we address Mr. Allard's comment that, that if you put in the, the restrictions that we're talking about, what, what makes him not have to worry?
I would say that's probably a question for the engineer. That's about my favorite. Thanks.
Okay. So.
Mr. Bushel on the call?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Okay.
Hear me? Yeah, so we're passing the hundred-year storm through there that happens every hundred years or thereabouts. It does not happen every year. A hundred-year storm, you're talking almost seven inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period. So I think the last one occurred back in, it was oh-six in this area. So, you know, it could very well occur more than every hundred years or, you know, but it's not going to occur every year. You know, and, you know, basically if that ever got backed up enough, it would just go right over the top of the driveway and keep going, you know? So I don't really see much of, much of an issue there, you know, as far as flooding.
So what you're saying then is that the, the backup, that any, that, that essentially that, that the upstream impact will not constitute an obstruction or, as it were, a dam that would cause further impalement of water or further buildup of, of water in the upstream area.
Right. I mean, the driveways at an elevation of one eighty-eight, and you can see where you hit elevation one eighty-eight pretty quick. You know, on the plan there, it cuts across, you know, so probably about you know, the most that would, that would be about a hundred feet upstream is the most that would, that would ever back up. And that'd be, that'd be even more than a hundred-year storm, so. Yeah.
George?
Okay, a question for Mr. Perso.
You guys keep going back to all these design things, hundred-year storm, five-hundred-year storm, um, box culvert, round culvert. It, it all goes back to the same thing. It all goes back to the wetlands regulation. If you were in a perfect world and somebody is going to put a, a pipe into upland review area on a brook, it's completely different. That's, that's a completely different thing. Now you're talking about filling seventy feet of wetlands and the associated upland review area with it that is completely against the regulations that Connecticut Environmental Protection Agency put forth to protect the wetlands that you guys are tasked with tonight. The filling is the thing here. The filling, the obstructing of the flows, the pollutions. The pollutions are, are, are in different ways. It's, it's not like a, it, it isn't, in fact, there's pollution if a car drips some oil or something, but it's also thermal pollution. It's, it's pollution from the, the water that you're going to be damming up at the end of those pipes because it's going to dam it up. You guys have to read CGS forty-two and the related definitions and make your determination on that. It, I don't, I don't care if it's a thousand-year flood. It doesn't have anything to do with, it has to do with the fill and the regulation and how you guys are tasked with reading them. And that's, that's, that's all I have to say.
Joe Allard, do you have your hand raised again?
Yeah, one last comment here is, yeah, you're talking about fifty-year storms. You're talking about hundred-year storms. I'm not talking about fifty and hundred-year storms when that thing wants to back up. That thing will back up in the, in the, in the spring when, uh, when you've got an ice dam and down, downstream from me. It can back up then. In fact, that's, uh, that's when it most likely to back up all the way up to my garden area. So what about the winter? When, when there's ice back over there and it backs up? Now, uh, yeah, we've had good heavy rains and that water comes down in a torrent. And so there's another time it can happen. I don't think I've seen a fifty-year storm or a hundred-year storm, but I don't want to either. Thank you.
Okay. Having seen no further requests for comment, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, the objection from the commission. Seeing done, we'll consider the hearing adjourned. Thank you for your attendance. We will proceed now with about a five-second pause to the regular meeting. I'll call the regular meeting to order. The wall call and seating of alternates, the same as for the hearing. Item three, agenda, additions and changes to the agenda. I'm going to propose one change under item six, old business. I want to add consideration of IWWC two zero three six as in the hearing as item number six A. And of course, then six A, IWWC twenty-one thirty becomes six B. That's the only change I would propose. And I will move that change. Are there other changes to the agenda from members of commissioners suggested by the agent? Okay, so do we have consent to change the agenda? Or any objection to changing the agenda from members of commission?
No objection here, Allen C.
Okay, so we will then proceed to item number four. Approval of minutes from our March first, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Are there any changes? I have one typo which I have to find. In the meantime, has anybody else noted any?
You looking for a motion first? Commissioner Elliott?
Okay, yeah, if you want to have a motion to approve.
The minute, minutes of March first, twenty-twenty-one as written, as submitted.
And a second?
Larson seconds.
Okay, now we can discuss. They say I have one change that I have to find again and ask commissioners if they have noted any other corrections or revisions of the minutes. Minnie, I noticed a small typo in, on the first page. It's about line twenty. About two thosethes is the way down. The line reads, add item eleven C, revision on regulations and scheduled hearings. It should be revision of. Got it. Any other revisions or corrections?
I have none.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Chad or Bill, any?
No changes.
Okay. Okay. Then. You can uh vote on approval as corrected. Those in favor signify by raising your hands.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, oh, and I vote aye. My motion carries forty zero zero. Okay, next item on the agenda. Once I get back to it. Okay, uh, public comment. Since we've already had the hearing, I hope that we can pass over that. Okay. And then next we get to all business permit applications. And again, uh, as agenda has been modified, item six A is uh, IWWC twenty thirty-six. This would be appropriate time for commission to discuss the application uh, and you know discuss with the applicants where we, where we stand.
George, I'm here to.
But pardon?
I'm here for the applicant.
I, I've, that, that actually has been changed to twenty, that's item B.
Oh.
We just added IWW twenty thirty-six as item A. You'll come next.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I guess the, the, the first thing I want to check on here is whether the commission is prepared to vote on the application or whether we need uh, further discussion and uh, potential for uh, negotiating uh, revisions uh, based on uh, public comment and other information we received. Poll the members, Mr. Larson.
I uh, I'm not sure how to proceed with the, the, the two comments that tug at me are, one, how do we ensure that we don't make things worse? And maybe it's not our business, uh, but for the upstream public to be concerned with flooding when we put a restriction in there. That is a concern as well as uh, his other comment on uh, you know, when, when does it stop? At what point do we, we say we you know, we, we just can't allow the filling of the wetlands. And I'm not sure. I know the answers to those questions tonight. I'm not sure I would ever know the answer to those questions, but that, that troubles me tonight as I sit here in wrestle without, how to proceed. So if, if you were Agent Wagner, have any, anything to enlighten me on that, now would be a good time. I'd be happy to hear.
I will comment first. With respect to the upstream impact, yes, that would be an impact that we have to consider. And we have to have reasonable assurance that the proposed activity will not exacerbate the existing condition. With respect to the other concern, that is to say essentially precedent. Uh, we have to, we, we are reviewing one application and we refer, we review every application on a case by case basis according to general principles and, and regulations. Okay? Uh, there's nothing in, in the state statutes that say you cannot put in a wetland crossing that involves culverts and fill. Okay? Otherwise, we would not have approved several applications that have come before the commission during our term. The question for the, that the commission has to wrestle with is is how, you know, how severe is the impact and has the proposed design adequately mitigated the impact that has been identified? I don't know if our agent has any further comment on that, but I'm happy to hear he does.
Nothing uh like uh, all of the decisions uh, the commissions, uh, we've had a lot of good input. Uh, I don't think I could really add anything other than uh, what the experts have said. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners, uh, Mr. Halasy. Mr. Monroe.
Just trying to recall the, the most current comment we had from the town engineer, whether he had actually commented on the most current plan. I did read comments, but I can't recall the sequence, to be honest.
What response to that? And say, I believe we're looking at a revision dated March tenth, although it's identified uh, as a PDF file as three point one point two one.
Meaning March first, George, is it?
Well, again, that's what, that's what it's dated. Uh, if, you know, if you're looking at the documents that are posted online, uh, the PDF file uh, with the wetland crossing plan uh, is, shows rev underscore three point one point two one. Uh, but although as uh, Engineer Bushnell pointed out, the actual date of revision was uh, three ten. That would have been extremely fast turnaround from our March first meeting, when you think about it. So I guess the, you know, the essential question for the commission here is, you know, does the plan uh, and the both the engineering plan and the uh, recommendations from Mr. Logan satisfy the requirements for permitting the activity? And is the degree of mitigation sufficient relative to the impact of the project?
Chair Elliott?
Yes.
Um, Bill Mcrogan. I was, when you say mitigation, we're filling, we're, we're tasked with voting on saying yes or no to somebody, this project, which is going to be filling in some, quite a few square feet of wetlands. I, I understand what a pain and uh, you know, but the barberry is, I have it in my yard and I know it's a hard thing to deal with and it's, it's a nuisance, but I don't know if that is a level of mitigation that's and uh to equal to filling in wetlands. And it's not really right where we're talking about anyway. This area, you know, the, the, the day that we did our walk out there, the site walk, it was dry, bone dry. So I can't really see it. Like, we didn't even, I didn't even notice it hardly, except that it dipped way down. I did remember that. But it was bone dry because we were in a drought. So it, it's hard to try and picture that as a wet area that's going to be filled in. And um but since that's what it is, it's a wetland that we, we're going to, we're tasked to, you know, saying yes or no to filling. I think we should do everything that we can to truly mitigate the disturbance there. And if there's something more that they can do, I guess the span is not feasible. But if, if you can put a couple of culverts in there, open it up as much as you possibly can. And maybe even put a pipe too, if you have, if you, you know, it's like, just open it as much as you can physically do so that the water will pass through. And I know, you know, wildlife is not really our issue, but it'll also help I, the wetlands on either side of the berm. If you open it up as much as you can, it will help. And that's what we should do. As much as we can do is, that's feasible. And if it means you know, just that, to me, the tube is, I don't like it. I don't like the idea that there, it just seems like that's going to get clogged up. The way the woods are, there's so much debris out there. Unless somebody's out there cleaning up woods all the time, it's eventually something's going to fall and it's going to get clogged up. And uh, then that's going to create a problem upstream. The whole wetlands is going to get flooded. Washed out potentially. So if they could, if the engineer could open it up a little as much as possible. Then maybe that's the best we could do for the wetlands. And that's it.
Uh, one comment, uh, Mr. Monroe, uh, do take a look at the, the uh, photographs that uh, Mr. Logan already referenced. They're in the um, file online. Hold on a second, here, I'll pull that up. It's identified uh, in the uh, applications as a letter from G. Logan to Chairman one dot two two dot two one. Uh, and uh, as he said, fortuitously, he was there after a fairly heavy rainfall. Uh, and uh, the um, the photographs he provides do show, the, the clearly show the, the stream characteristics. Uh, and uh, as you referenced, the, the flow uh, through the area where the crossing would exist and also downstream uh, where it fans out into uh, broad riparian corridor. Uh, so I think you can get us, you can very much get a sense of the uh, stream crossing area and the, and the actual stream characteristics from those photographs. And uh, again, with respect to the question of mitigation, uh, recall that mitigation doesn't just mean one to one offsetting. What it means is, you know, doing the best to minimize the impact and uh, things like uh, removing barberry and replacing would be uh, more or less icing on the cake.
Okay.
Uh, now, again, I'll ask the uh, again, the applicants or specifically in this case, I think Mr. Bushnell would do best to respond to the question about, you know, doing the most you can uh, to ensure that uh, there's no uh, upstream impact of the uh activity and the, the questions about um, you know, potential for uh, in effect, uh, creating a dam by way of obstructing stream flow.
Um, you know, I would say that the, the most we could do would be the eight foot wide box culver. You know, multiple structures, the problem with putting multiple structures side by side, a couple of things. One is you scour in between them. Trying to keep the water from infiltrating in between them, scouring out between them. You know, and, and the, the channels out there, I, I don't think are wide enough to to warrant a second structure on, on either side. I mean, eight foot's plenty wide enough. Um, three foot's plenty high enough, even with twenty-five percent of it bearing to, to, to get the hundred, hundred year storm through there. Um, you know, as far as upstream potential, I just took a quick look at the topography there on the, on the aerial topography from the, the GIS site. I mean, it appears that those houses are quite a bit higher than that one eighty-eight that I'm, you know, that I'm showing there. You know, as far as, as far as the upstream impact. So um, you know. The culverts are going to give you the least, least chance of any, any plugging too, you know, something that's that big. You know, a stick isn't going to plug that or, or leaves or anything that would plug like a fifteen inch pipe, you know? Um, that's, that's where you see plugging of, of, of culverts, you know, when you get to the smaller diameters, fifteen, eighteen, even, even, you know, twenty fours can get, get plugged up with sticks and things, you know? Ice dams forming, they're going to form whether we put this crossing in or not, you're still going to have the potential of, of ice dams forming. I don't, you know? I don't see that being a real potential there, though. It's not that kind of, that's an intermittent stream, you know? So.
I just want to say the eight foot wide culvert or the open uh, box culver that is situated closer to the properties on Prime Ridge Road, Pine Ridge Drive. It's not the other side, so. It's, again, it's eight feet wide, the types of obstructions that, you know, it's hard to imagine what would dam that up. And then also just the least restriction of the flow of the, of the two pipes that's on the side where people's homes are, people's properties are.
Chairman Elliott? You're muted. I'm going to go ahead and talk. I think you said yes. Look at it, your lips there.
Read my lips, yes.
Yeah, the I would recommend, and I would be happy to make a motion if that's the way to do it, that we have our engineer review the plan to just give us the due diligence to make sure that the upstream homeowners aren't going to be negatively impacted by the design that we're looking at.
Okay, uh, let me just check here. We did, of course, already, we had a review.
We did, and that was
dated January twenty-fifth uh, from Engineer Handfield. It certainly appears that the, the, you know, the, the design certainly as currently presented uh, seems to address all of the uh, comments and considerations that were brought forth by Engineer Handfield in his review.
We got public comment tonight that I think is, is uh, important. And, and we need to make sure that uh, I think that, that we don't
I think that, that we don't negatively impact, uh, that those homeowners by the actions that we take.
So your motion would be to, uh, ask a review of those specific considerations.
Yes.
Or a, a review that would address those specific considerations from, uh, based on the public comment, uh, during the hearing.
And he might say the existing, uh, plan is fine. He might say put in the two box culverts. I don't know what he'd say, but I'd sure feel better having the professional, uh, that's representing the, those homeowners, uh, before we vote to take action one way.
Not representing the owners, but, uh, advising the commission on the, uh, relevance of those comments.
Right.
Yeah, and, uh, I would, uh, okay, so if you want to make that in form of a motion, I would sort of entertain that. And ask for a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, so we've got a motion, uh, by Commissioner Larson, a second by Commissioner Halasy to, uh, request an engineering review, uh, to address specifically comments uh, regarding upstream impact, uh, potential upstream impact of the current design. Correct, we stated?
Correct.
Yes, uh, okay. Elliot, I, I still have a concern. I do have a concern. I don't want it to make it sound that's the only concern that I have.
Okay.
Um, I do have a concern that, um, Hank Gruner has, has made some comments. I, I don't know as though, I haven't really fully digested them. It really, I, I still want to preclude revisiting any other issues besides the engineering report, sort of trying to say.
Okay, well, are there, are there other aspects specifically we want the engineer to address? If we're going to ask for consulting?
I would just like to revisit Mr. Gruner's comments in context of what was stated this evening.
Okay, would that be appropriate for the engineering report or are we looking at some other?
But I'm just saying, I would like the opportunity to review Mr. Gruner's report again and, and if it could future had concerns, it could still be brought up at the next meeting. I, I got the sense that the only issue that could be raised would be an engineer would be.
Well, that's the only thing we're asking an engineer to review.
I'm not asking the engineer to review anything. I'm just asking, I, I'm just saying that we'd like the opportunity to review Hank Gruner's report.
Right, but that's not germane to this motion. The motion here is to get an engineering review. We can separately address any other, uh, considerations that you want to revisit as well. Um, but, uh, you know, since.
I, I thought we were, you were limiting.
No, I'm, I'm only, I'm only trying to specify what we're going to ask the engineer to do.
Okay, okay. I have, so I have no concerns for the engineer.
Yeah, I, I don't want, I don't want to give the engineer an open ended brief, uh, since we're really concerned with, you know, uh, one specific question, which is to say, uh, and, and again, it's related to the public comment about the potential for upstream impact. Now, uh, clearly, uh, Engineer Bushnell has the opinion that, uh, we, uh, don't need to worry about that, but, uh,
My mistake, I just left my window.
Was asking for a second opinion. Okay, okay, so are we, uh, are we clear on the motion? Is there any further discussion on the motion to, uh, get an engineering review here?
That would be specifically with respect to upstream impact concerning flooding of upstream properties.
Exactly. That might entail, uh, taking up, um, the pollinants offer, uh, to inspect the property too. Remember, the engineering review so far has been essentially confined, uh, to the, uh, area of direct impact, uh, because the engineer consultants, uh, and ecological consultant, uh, were, you know, didn't have, uh, explicit permission, uh, to inspect, uh, further upstream. So, uh, we might need to, uh, include that, uh, request for permission, uh, in the, uh, in the request for, for review. Okay, so, uh, we've got the motion, a second, and I'll ask for a roll call and vote. Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
Commissioner Halasy.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So the motion carries 4 0 0 and, uh, I guess, uh, Mr. Wagner, that will probably be your responsibility to, uh, secure that, to, to request that engineer and review or work that out, the details with our consultant.
I'll take care of that this week.
Okay, uh, so moving on, uh, Commissioner Halasy, you mentioned again wanting to, uh, revisit, uh, um, Mr. Gruner's comments, uh, or to have a little further consideration of those comments. Uh, are you proposing that we do that now or?
No, I just want to, I just didn't want to.
Uh, in, in light of the fact, we're, we're going to have to revisit this question.
It would be raised.
Uh, this proposal, application, uh, once we receive, uh, the, uh, engineering report.
I'm sorry, there's a little technical difficulty and I was talking over you because I, I didn't think you were talking.
Uh, I know things keep bouncing in and out for me too. It's one of the, uh, great frustrations of, uh, Zoom meetings. Uh, okay, do, do you want to bring up the reconsideration of, um, Mr. Gruner's comments now, or do you want to defer that to, uh, subsequent meeting?
I don't know for a fact that it needs further discussion. I just wanted an opportunity to review the matter and I just didn't want it to, to, I didn't want to show up at the next meeting with the understanding that we would not bring up anything other than the engineers, the comments from the engineer. That's all, that's all I asked.
No, no, I, I, I think that, uh, everything, uh, is still on the table, uh, as far as the commission is, uh, deliberations, considerations are concerned. Okay, uh, do we have any, uh, further questions or comments from the commission regarding the application? I think it might be addressed to the applicant or their agents.
Nope.
Okay, seeing done, I would like to move on, uh, to our next item on the agenda uh, with some hope of finishing this meeting, uh, today. We have, uh, an application, uh, from the town of Andover, I W C, W C 2103, uh, for, uh, activities at the Doris Chamberlain Nature Pond. Um, I believe that, uh, okay, uh, yeah, Mr. Person, Sergeant Person is still on the call and, uh, going to address that. I believe we have some updates on that. Uh, there were some photographs posted, uh, by our agent, Mr. Wagner on the, uh, on his visit on April. So again, uh, the application is to essentially clear brush and, um, tree branches surrounding the, um, pond, uh, to enhance its value, uh, for recreation. Everybody have the, uh, application in hand? Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, from Commissioner Larson. Uh, I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, that was, uh, didn't recognize the voice. Was that Mr. Monroe or Mr. Halasy? Okay, so a second from Halasy, uh, to approve the application. So now we're open for discussion on the motion. Um, I want to revisit one question in the application. Um, we refer to work around the edge. You'll have to forgive me a moment while I sift through my documents to find that application 2103. Okay, so the, the work includes not only, um, activities on the perimeter of the water course, but, uh, removal of deadfall, uh, that has lodged in the water course. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think we're, uh, all probably familiar with the pond. Uh, the Conservation Commission is, of course, previously applied for and received approval for activities in the review area, uh, for the, um, for the water course, including, uh, improvements to the trail, uh, that connects the parking area to the, um, bike and walking pathways, uh, known as the Percy Cook Trail. Uh, and, uh, the Conservation Commission, uh, has, uh, approved, uh, the activity. Uh, so unless there are further questions or comments on the application, we're probably ready to proceed to a vote. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative here?
George, can I take a minute of your time and ask you a question?
Yeah.
What exactly, what part of the wet, wet regulations? Um, is, is this involved with, what, what part of the regulation did you go to, to see if we could trim brush around the pond?
Basically, it's an upland review area, okay? It's a water course. The pond is a water course by definition.
Yep.
And the upland review area, uh, I think this is actually a special, uh, area of special concern. It's at least 100 feet. And so removal or deposition, especially the part that has to do with removal of material from the water course would clearly fall under the regulations. So, um, I can't cite chapter and verse, um, and I can probably find it in the regulations. Remember that, uh, unfortunately, the, the PDF file that our regulations currently exist in is not searchable.
Agent Wagner here, I think it falls under, uh, section 4.3.
The activity, the recreational activity is a, an activity that's permitted as a right. But the, you know, the, the modification essentially here, the, the tree trimming and so forth is something that would be a regulated activity. And again, I think it would fall generally under the rubric of, uh, deposition or removal of materials.
Right. That's under state, the state regulation?
Well, remember, our regulations devolve from the states. You know, the town of Andover's regulations are based on the state's regulations. We have to satisfy the state's regulations de minimum.
In, in the future, is that our zoning agent, is that Mr. Wagner? I mean, our, our, our office, or I mean?
Yes, Agent Wagner is the wetlands agent for the town of Andover.
Right, it is, uh, is it possible that, you said that it was in the upland review area, correct?
Well, the removal of, uh, the, the trimming that's around the perimeter is in the upland reviewer. Removal of materials from the water course itself is not, it, that's in the water course. So that's not something Agent Wagner could approve.
Only in the upland.
On his own, exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
I was just seeing if, if, if it's possible, like, if this happened again, that we could, um, make a little bit faster. I was just wondering if Agent Wagner could do that, but he can't because it's not in his purview. Has to go to wetlands.
Exactly, has to go to the commission. And I regret the delay, but, you know, we're moving as fast as we can given the fact that, you know, between the time of the receipt of the application, there's a minimum delay that's required by the state uh, in case somebody wants to hold a hearing. Now, the, the commission ruled that this was not a significant activity and that therefore, you know, would not require a hearing, uh, prior to our determination. But the, the, the fact is again, that, uh, as it's a regulated activity, and so we got to sign off on it. Uh, I think that we're, um, pretty much ready to do so. We have the motion, and again, second, to approve the application. And if there's no further discussion, I'll get a roll call vote. Moving across the top of the screen, uh, Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
Commissioner Halasy. And I, Chairman Elliott, also vote aye. So the motion carries 4 0 0. Again, there was a built in delay before you can begin the activity, uh, but, uh, you know, I don't know. I suspect that this will be volunteer activity and it'll probably take a while to round up them anyhow. Besides that, there's no more ice on the pond, so skating is not inhibited.
Hmm, right.
So you can go ahead with clearing and, uh, as soon as, again, the, uh.
But we were, we were going to do it from the ice, would have made it a lot easier.
Well, yeah, that was a pretty short window of opportunity, but, uh, I guess that now you have to do it from, uh, canoes, kayaks, and flotation devices.
Right.
Okay, well, you wouldn't have been able to pull branches out of the, out of the muck during the ice anyhow, so. Those, those obstructions would have been impossible to deal with at that.
Yeah, some of those trees, we wouldn't have been able to get at anyways.
Right, okay, uh, so moving on with our agenda. Uh, item number seven, enforcement actions. Agent Wagner, could you comment on the current status of? The actions at 33 Route 87? Has there been any movement, literally?
Unfortunately, not since, let's see, when did I drive by? I haven't been by there this week. I went by last. Tuesday, and there was nothing done. I spoke with Kurt on Monday, April 5th. He told me, he was talking to Mark Williams. He was gonna try and get him out there that day. And I went by the day after and I didn't see anything. So I take it he didn't get there. And I asked for another update and I haven't heard back from him yet, so.
I drove by yesterday. No movements.
Nice, Jed. We note that it's been over a year since our show cause hearing. And. The. Order to remediate was issued on February 24, 2020. I need to look at our flow chart. Oops, wrong time course. Okay, we are at the stage of order not complied with. And the next arrow. Goes to seek court injunction and/or funds. I would like the commission's decision. On whether to, again. Defer action or whether it's time to. Talk to our attorney.
I'd like to weigh in, Halcy.
Mr. Halcy, yes.
I would like to defer a month. And the reason being, it does sound like a long time. I think there were some extenuating circumstances. I think the applicant did not get a lot of direction. And some of that was on me. And I think he's shown a lot of progress in the last, well, he's shown a lot of progress. And I'm hoping that he will finish it. Without going to court.
That would certainly be a consummation devoutly to be with.
That's my. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Larson?
Well, at hindsight, I wish we would have gone to court a year ago. But, but I agree with, I guess. My recommendation is that. You know, our agent. Get a firm commitment. It may be he's tried and can't. Ask Kurt if he wants us to take him to court or if he wants to get it done. The. You know, the last excuse was it was frozen into the ground and he couldn't move it. That's a while ago now. And it just doesn't appear that he's, he is making an effort. And I think we as a commission. In our agent, they're both all bent over backwards to allow him to. Keep that huge shed that he's got out there. It only pull it up, you know, a given amount. He should be working very hard to make us all happy, and I don't detect that. And he either needs to make us happy or we'll just tell him we'll go to court. That's probably what we've done.
Commissioner Monroe, you have a, I know you were, you weren't here when we got started on this.
Yeah, that was that long ago, I guess. No, I, I wasn't, I never went to the site walk. And it does sound like. He needs a little bit of a prod. Somehow, I don't know how, besides. You send him a letter that's from a lawyer, that could do it. I don't know.
Well, I think that our agent can convey the sentiment that the next step in this process would be. Legal action. And that, you know, based on what Commissioner Halcy has stated, no more than a month. We should have some action. By our next meeting. That's not quite a month, but you got the drift here.
And we should just let them know that, you know, if it's not. Completed by the next meeting, we will take legal action. And then we have to be prepared to take that step. He will probably. Do it the day after our next meeting. But we've given him an uproar at this point.
Okay, I, I'm inclined to agree with. Commissioner Halcy, that there was some. Miscommunication and. I should say, commission incurred delay in the process. You know, when he first applied to move the shed. We turned down that application. Then they had to come back and reapply with a new plan. So some of that delay is. Rightly on us. So if, if we have consensus here, I, I guess we can. Again, ask Agent Wagner to convey that legal action will be forthcoming. If we don't see. Progress, substantial progress in completion. Of the required action to remediate. The, both the improperly placed shed and the illegal deposition. Unpermitted deposition of materials. We're good to go with that. Okay. Hearing no dissent, I'll say we are. I had a question, by the way, for Agent Wagner. Last time we discussed. The. Apparent, well, there was a problem with. Oh, on Handy Road, 27 Handy Road. The, there was a problem with siltation. And the, I believe your, you know, the record shows that the plan. For the site called for a silt fence that wasn't there. Has any action been taken there to your knowledge?
Um, yeah, I put, I put the notes for that in the agent report, but we could talk about.
Okay, well, then, then fine. We'll, we'll take it up in our next. Item on the agenda, which is the agent report.
Okay, well, I'll start with that one, I guess. And so we're just talking about it. Visited that site on March 23rd. I wrote him a letter. About the soap fence. I sent it certified, but apparently I sent it to that house and he doesn't live at that house. So. I gave him a copy of the address of the, of the letter when I visited him on 23rd. So what I did on that visit, looked to the, at the hillside, to the west of the house and the trench that was. And I received multiple calls from. The homeowner, Hector, explained that the well line was vandalized. The pipe was cut and it was filled with some unidentified chemical, and it needed an emergency repair. Which was the reason for his, his trench. Not sure, but I think that would fall under maintenance of existing property, because it was a repair of an existing pipe. The hillside is previously dug up and it was filled in and it was seeded. Straw was placed over the seed. When I was there on the 23rd, a trench at the top of the hill and near the house. And the shed was left open for inspection by the building inspector. And I'm not sure if it's been covered up by then. That was, that one is. I believe it's right at the edge of the upland review area, where the open trench is. I noticed several piles of dirt from the trench excavation near the open section of the trench at the top of the hill. Once again, that's right at the edge of the upland review area. Just 200 feet there. I talked to Hector about stabilizing the hillside. We talked about some plantings to stabilize the hillside near 100 Road. He, he talked about how he used to have his goats there and they create a lot of erosion. So he moved the fence. Further away from the road. And we talked about planting some shrubs and other plants over there to, to cut down on the erosion. And then. He was talking about using jersey barriers and placing fill behind them on the slope where the goats still are, which is further away. Let's see, what that would be, that would be to the north of the well pipe. So further away from Handy Road. I advised him that they definitely need a, an application for a permit if he was gonna place fill and jersey barriers there. So he told me he would contact me if, if he decided to do that. So that's where we're at for that.
Okay, so no action by the commission required at this point?
No.
Okay.
Let's see, what else I do? I talked to Jim Blair, who is working at 422 Lake Road. I received a few inquiries about the gravel driveway that's over there. So I sent him an email. It told me that. When I do that, that was on the 23rd of March. He told me he was gonna be there within the next two weeks. So he was there. I was over by there today and I saw his truck over there. He said the lawn's supposed to be seeded sometime in the third week of April. So what's that, next week? And then he's gonna remove a gravel road as they're leaving. So that all the vehicles and everything will be on the gravel road and then they'll remove it. And there'll be nothing left. Near the water. So you have. A pending. Agent approval, 85 Lakeside Drive. The applicant. Is looking to place a 12 by 10 foot pre-built shed 26 feet from the lake. So I talked to him about controlling runoff, similar to the approved application at 151 Lakeside Drive. And he just emailed me today about, about that. He contacted Claude Farms, which was the one that is gonna do the work on the shed. And then the same ones that worked on 151. And they recommended. Not installing gutters because it's only a 120 square foot shed compared to the 400 square foot one that we, that. The commission previously approved in 151. They said the, it's the same gravel base. Which will use. What was it, three quarter inch stone? Yeah. So they said that would be, should be enough to dissipate the rainfall. So. Yeah, that's, that's that application. I haven't approved it yet. If anybody would like to offer any comments on it?
I would.
I figured you would.
Well, and this is. The difference between this shed and 151 Lakeside Drive is we have now implemented the lake regulations. And so by virtue of the fact that the shed is greater than 100 square feet, he has to. Present a nutrient allocation worksheet with a plan to compensate for the runoff and an additional 10%. We expect, you know, the runoff water from his, his property to be 10% cleaner than it is today after he puts the shed there. And, and. And so he's got more homework to do than the 151 Lakeside Drive. We tried to get them to do something, but we didn't have any enforcement mechanism at that point. And the reason that's, that's important from the wetlands' understanding of what's going on is that. You know, at a minimum, he would be digging a trench. To capture the rain. In the upland review area, which we didn't do over Lakeside Drive. And, and so. He has to go above and beyond just the trench because it's 120 square feet instead of 100 square feet. And so it makes it a little more difficult. But I would think that we as a commission would want to know what is, his plan is before that gets approved because it is gonna involve. You know, digging in the upland review area someplace.
So that nutrient allocation worksheet that gets submitted to the planning zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
And. It's a little bit convoluted maybe, but he's sort of got to have that done before he brings his plan to you because you have to be able to.
Yeah, that'll be part of it.
Whether or not it needs to come to the commission or not.
Got it. I'll, I'll let him know that.
Yeah, that's an area where I have to coordinate with Joe and meaning that. You have to really do the zoning upfront along with the wetlands. Looking into wetlands. Which is, is just sort of. A new way of, a new paradigm. Forge will have to. Figure that out.
So the lake regulations are a zoning regulation.
He's gonna have to.
We have to make sure they're satisfied.
Well, they'll change the design. Because like Jed said, they'll have to, he'll have to address the. Extra, you know, like impermeable surface that he creates. So that'll change the plan. That'll get submitted to wetlands. So you gotta do the nutrient allocations. They figure out what you have to. Construct or dig. And then submit the finalized plan to wetland.
Okay. But that's not in the wetlands' regulations. This isn't in the zoning regulations. I mean, I realize that they're coordinated. And, but, but again, you know, it's, it's not our regulation. That we're. Required here.
Well, it would change the plan. I think that the problem is that if I approved it and then.
Yeah, and he didn't do it, then he wouldn't get it approved by zoning. I.
Yeah, and then he would have to change it and then he would have to resubmit it and then I would have to prove it again. So.
So, yeah, so as Christian Hollis says, you guys got to work together to present a coherent front to the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, are there any other items for the agent report here?
Um, yeah, I went to 436 Lake Road, the one that we recently approved. It's a new house construction over there. I visited it. Yesterday. The 12th, and then I visited today, the 13th. The builder and applicant were expressing that they wanted to clear. I didn't count. I think there are probably about six to eight trees that they want to leave. And they want to clear the rest from the area between the house and the lake. So they could have a view. And the permit application have it.
Yeah, that, that's.
I have the. I have the exact wording. And the erosion control plan that they submitted, item nine in their application, there was a effort to minimize pollution, propose home, if you're located 125 feet from the lakeshore and a wooded buffer is to remain between the house and the lake. So when I went to view the site, I mean, it looked like there was pretty much a clear cut right to the water. So I told him, I told him that would probably need a new permit if he wanted to do.
That's a substantial modification.
Especially since it specifically says wooded buffer. He sent me as a rebuttal, he sent me the special meeting minutes from December 12th. Where the sidewalk was and then on the last sentence of the sidewalk for 436 Lake Road, it said minimal clearing intended only as required for construction and to afford a view of Andover Lake. But it doesn't really say too much.
Did they retain the buffer vegetation on the lakeshore? Does it remember that specifically something that they stated that they intended to do?
Yeah.
I would offer up that, you know, that is something I think is, is we look at all the different projects that we've approved. You know, and we're through zoning now, working on one over at 57 Handy Road where the applicants always tell us that they are going to minimize the cutting of trees. And then whenever we go over, or if you go to look at the site after they've cut the trees in 85 Lakeside Drive is the other classic example, you know, where it essentially got clear cut. There were are always significantly more trees cut down than we think. When, when they're coming in to get the permit. And I remember the discussion on the sidewalk. And, and I was pleased with how small of you they were describing that they were going to cut. Yes. And that's why it's important to have it in writing, important to have it on the drawing. Because you always get more than you expect. So the definition of view encompasses a lot.
Well, it should have a limit of clearing on the site plan too. I was just looking at it now.
Yeah, likewise.
And the limit of clearing is right at the exposed ledge where the silt fence is, I'm pretty sure.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, it is on the map that it's to remain. So. Yeah, it looks like it's pretty clear. Informed him that he needs to, he needs to apply for a permit if he wishes a clear cut in his shoreline.
No, permit modification. And I would say no in certain terms that, that they have exceeded though, you know, they, it sounds like they've exceeded the limits of clearing that are shown on the site plan.
Yeah, well, they haven't done anything yet. So
Okay.
They just had them, I had them mark them and then I went back today to see what it actually looked like and then I told them the whole law.
Okay, good, good. I'm glad you were able to catch it before. I mean, it's really impossible to put a tree that's cut down.
That's, that's everything for the agent report.
Okay. Well, thank you for those updates and we'll move on to other business. I see Mr. Gruner is still on the call, so we can get a Conservation Commission update on the vertical pools. I understand that the students have done their deeds.
They have indeed. They have indeed. So I want to extend an invitation to the commission for April 27th at seven o'clock. That's the regular meeting of the Conservation Commission Tuesday evening and the students will, and the faculty have participated in this will be presenting the results of the vertical pool mapping. As you may recall, this is a joint initiative between the Conservation Commission and the Illinois Wetland Commission that has several phases. The first phase was to map the, the presence of potential vertical pools based on satellite imagery using GIS software, spatial analysis software. And two students were working with faculty to do that. The, the, this, and they have completed that and they'll be able to present the results and go through how they, how they interpreted that. Just a reminder that the second phase will be to, now that we would have maps of the vertical, where the vertical pools occur, the goal is to next spring be able to collect biological data on those pools to be able to add that to the mapping layer. And in between that, we'll, we'll be focused on recruiting volunteers and reaching out to landowners who have potential vertical pools on their properties for permission for access. So there, there will be two other stages before we finish this, which will be next spring. But this is the first, first step in the process of completing the mapping. So seven o'clock on April 27th via Zoom. An invite to the commission to participate in that, in that meeting.
Well, I'll certainly be on the call and I encourage all the other commissioners to join it as well.
And George, I'd like to make sure that, I don't know if I have her personal email, but I would make sure that Megan, because I know she's not, wasn't able to make the meeting tonight. Megan's aware of it because she, she was one of the individuals who sort of initial connection with UConn and brought it to the table.
Okay, I'll make sure to reach out to her as well. Okay, next, speaking of which, I contacted all the commissioners regarding a letter I received from the town clerk's office. It's time to consider appointment or reappointment of commissioners for the 2021 to 2023 term. I regret to report that Megan Lally has informed me that she does not wish to continue to serve on the commission at this time. She hopes that in a few years, things will settle down to the point where she can rejoin the activity. But for the moment, she will not seek reappointment. I contacted Ed Smith, who's of course not present tonight. I got the impression he might be willing to serve as an alternate. But not as a regular member of the commission. Thankfully, Blaine Monroe has indicated a willingness to step in as a regular member. So we can perhaps fill that breach. And I will ask directly, Commissioner Larson, are you going to be willing to continue to serve as a commissioner, especially as the liaison with the planning and zoning?
If you want me.
To be sure. But the first thing you have to do is be willing.
I'm willing.
Okay. And Commissioner Halas?
No, I find myself conflicted with the zoning end of things. It just doesn't feel comfortable.
I, I understand your demoral. Okay, I will report that to the town clerk. And obviously we are in a situation where we are, first of all, we don't even have a full complement of regular members. Oh, by the way, I am also going to continue on the commission. Again, once you step up to the plate, it's hard to step away. The, the fact is we are short of members and I will be God awful grateful for any suggestions for recruitment. We will certainly post notification and all that. But if anybody has any personal contacts, anybody that they think might be willing to step in, please let me know. I'll do my best to get them on board. Okay. Okay, item C, the revision of regulations. I contacted our attorney, Attorney Brant about this. First of all, it was mainly in connection with the need to review the regulations, revise regulation before we submit them to DEEP. He said he could turn it around pretty quickly, but advised us to wait until the end of the legislative session because there are some things going on, potential for changes that wouldn't necessarily impact wetlands per se, but other regulations, zoning and hearings and the like. So that, in other words, let's wait till the dust settles from the current legislative session before we finalize our regulation revisions. So I guess we can kick that can down the road a couple when the time is right. Okay, final item, IWWC standard permit conditions. I believe that, is that your comment, Agent Wagner?
Yeah, I meant to distribute a copy. There are some of the recent ones that we let's see, the one, IWWC 20-35 has a copy of the standard permit conditions. Basically, just wanted to send them out to the commissioners to review. So when they when we talk about standard permit conditions during the meeting, we're aware of the ones that are going to get attached to the permit.
Okay.
And those are the ones that are, because, because there was, there was a few older permits that I looked at that had different standard conditions. So I just took the ones out of the regulations that we have right now. So these are the ones that came straight out of a regulation.
Okay, then, okay, you want to distribute that then, so we can, if we have comments, we can bring them off for the next meeting? That seem reasonable? Okay.
I have, I have a question. Um, for when I do the minutes and you guys add conditions, do you want me to list the conditions? Would it be helpful for me to have that document or are you always going to refer to them as standard conditions?
We will refer to those as standard conditions. And especially after we've reviewed them, we should have a common understanding. When we add conditions, special conditions, for example, we might add special conditions if we choose to approve the application for the, we just talked about for the, for the driveway and well and crossing. We would probably have additional conditions. Those would, I think, have to be spelled out in the minute.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, anything else on the topic of permit conditions while we're at it? If not, okay, I note that our next regular meeting is Monday, May 3rd and we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
A move adjourned?
Okay, well, I'll take Halas's the motion and Larson's the second, just because they came in that way through my headphones. And hearing no objections, I'll call the meeting adjourned at 9:44 PM. Thank you all.
Good job on the public hearing there, George.
Yeah, that was, that was a little more extended than I expected, but that's why we have to have hearings, I guess. Just, well, we'll bring this up at the next meeting about how we're going to handle hearings in the, in the near future. Because it looks like we may be having to hold more of them based on our attorney's advice.